Let me go.
Is there an agenda? Agenda?
There is. And you, Madam Chairman, have to swear all these people in. Shanti's got to go first because she is trial. Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion pursuant to Idaho Code 742044B. I hereby make a motion to amend the agenda by removing the set time for an item, and the board will take up the item when time allows. The revised agenda containing the additional agenda item was posted forty-seven hours prior to commencement of this meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Didn't do something about that card. The name on it.
Oh, okay. I was like, can't think of anything. All right. You have the...
Agreed.
You're a reader or dry reading. You're the chairwoman.
Chairperson.
Shanti.
Shanti. She's the most important today. I am not. I do have to go back to trial, however. All right. I am ready.
Hang on, hang on.
You have to meet I, state your name. I, Shanti Blah. Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the laws of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And I will faithfully discharge all of the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge all of the duties...
Of the Office of County Prosecutor to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of County Prosecutor to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right. You need to sign here. You need to sign there. You can present her with this. Okay.
Thank you so much for letting me get on first.
Yep. Good luck out there.
I appreciate that so much. Thanks, everybody. You have to meet I, state your name.
I, Michael Chet.
Do solemnly swear that I will...
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge all the duties of the Office of County Sheriff.
And that I will faithfully discharge all the duties of the Office of County Sheriff.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Sign here. Pretend you're happy.
I was looking at your flamingo.
Oh, yeah, I see the flamingo now. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming.
Hofers, Albert. I, state your name.
I, Albert Hofers.
I, Albert Hofers. Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge all the duties of Office of County Commissioner.
I will faithfully discharge all the duties of County Commissioner.
Third district.
Third district.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You got one more. Diploma. You gotta get your diploma. That's dangerous.
She left her shooter over.
I did, my shooter.
I just saved that one.
I, state your name.
I, Buck Corvus.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge all the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge all of the duties...
Of the Office of County Commissioner, First District.
Of the Office of County Commissioner, First District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, good job there, Booth.
You let me down. Yeah. I would've swore you wore the same shirt you got in last night.
No, that's the blue and white shepherd one.
Wes had the same one.
Wes had the same one, yeah.
I know.
The picture's over there, yeah. So, all right. Nikki, you put your mom up.
Did you get that stuff from my office?
Good morning.
Hi, Nikki.
Hi. Very good. She wasn't driving, so it's not a big deal. Sorry, I'm typing a little cold here, so...
Were you trying to get line with Sheriff Parkin?
You know, I'm not sure what he was trying to do.
I didn't raise my hand.
At least he's okay, that's all that matters to me. That's literally it.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you, guys. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
What was your first motion?
Hey roll.
Hey roll. Second, all in favor? Do we have any certificates of residency?
Y'all never commit all the time.
Oh, I was just gonna say that. Eleven o'clock, we had him set for two fifteen. So that's why we just changed it to a non-time until he figured out what time he could come.
And that's for our records request with City...
Yes. He had a meeting and it was...
That ought to be interesting. Not a counselor. Scott, how you doing?
Good, good.
Are you just observing here?
Can't be just a person in the audience, we all know. Can't hide from it.
Tracy, do you want to go ahead and come on up?
Sure.
We were sparing you.
This guy right here with the camera, he's been trying to get on that board for ten years.
So with the nine-one-four meeting on Tuesday, they had gotten, I gave you guys the copies of the... There was only four, four total. But they recommended to you guys to put Victoria Davis in into the Prairie position. Vicki Smith to continue as the rural Glins Ferry King Hill. Tom Descharn to continue another term for rural mountain. And the member-at-large... The only applicant we had for that, basically, was Melinda Lysel. She said either rural, or I mean, member-at-large board...
But she's affiliated.
Yes. And so they did not consider her at all, her the resolution. And they didn't want to spend the money advertising, because we spent between the two payers seven million dollars. And they thought, instead of advertising again, just try to do it by word of mouth for the member-at-large. We had to, it was even on the counties, we had the county do that. We did.
Sounds good to me. They all read that. I'd make a motion to approve the appointment fragment about a board.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for this long drawn out...
Tracy has patience, that's amazing what Tracy she is. She laughs.
I didn't get beat up today.
What's that?
I didn't get beat up today.
I don't see, I don't think I beat you up. Are you gonna let Melinda know?
Yes, we'll...
And why, and I...
Yeah, when I actually notified all the applicants who we were gonna have to re-advertise, I included the new resolution with them when I sent the letter out to them to let them know.
Great.
So, they knew that, but we will send letters, but I will get the one, and I'll help Francine, because I have copies of it, that Vicki would always do, because you guys, that actually, that letter comes from you to them saying you've been appointed. I can send out the one, if you want, to Melinda saying, okay, you just didn't meet the qualifications. Or you guys can send it, it's up to you, whichever way. But the main appointments, you guys have to sign.
I figure you're gonna be here just a little bit.
Pardon me?
I think she's gonna be here just a little bit, isn't she, Sheriff? What, that's what I thought.
Well, we should still probably send it, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Generally.
Do you need me to stay?
Of course.
Both separate.
All right, so you want me just to send the letter to her and then the regular appointments?
Yeah, get them on the agenda, yeah.
I'll have you guys sign it. Okay.
Thanks, Tracy. All good. So where is Madison at? Hey, James?
Oh, he's back.
You wanna tell the board what you told me?
Yes, I actually have. So, at a meeting with Favor Construction on Wednesday on our new building, they are going to start demoing Monday, but then I was informed while I was in there that we're going to have a five thousand dollar bill to remove the dental cabinets. I made it very clear to them while I was in there, I wasn't signing it, that when we did the pre-bid walk, which they were not at, that I pointed out what was going to be staying and what was going. Dental cabinets was one of the first pieces that was gonna stay, and it needed to be demoed. Once they won, got the bid, and I walked around with them twice, I informed them every time we walked that these are staying, these are not going, everything that is out of the building is out of the building. So on Wednesday, that is what I was told, that we will have a change of work order. Let them know that I would not sign it, told them I would give it to you guys. George from GGLO emailed me this morning, he is setting up a meeting with Favor with me, and he's gonna inform them that we will not be signing this change of order.
Why did they want her to...
Why does... It was part of the demo. It was part of the demo, it was in there.
Oh, okay.
And then, so, but the demo crew wants to charge forty-three hundred dollars for it, and then, of course, now, all the charges on it.
All part of the demo.
Yeah. I made it very clear to them twice, and I made it very clear when I did the pre-bid walk. Said everyone in there, that's just part of it, so, that's why I was getting ahold of you yesterday, to let you know, but I figured, tucked and taped. It was there, I made it very clear, but yeah, I would just kind of surprise them. The five thousand dollar change of work order was not...
Not a good start.
Well, I thought we kind of had that discussion as well. I thought we were pretty clear about where we were gonna end up, that's where we were gonna start going right out of the gate.
So are we paying it?
No, I mean, I'm not signing it.
Yeah. I mean, they can come in here and throw a fit, but they can get it.
Yeah, I have a meeting with George, with Favor, he's setting up with Favor, and George gonna let them know also, we're not gonna accept it. I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop, but they do start Monday. The end date now is the end of May, because we're just trying to have it done, the end of May.
Great.
And they said the demo will take about three weeks to finish and then they'll go, so... That's for a rat on it. But I just wanted to inform you guys definitely on that.
All right. And I'm gonna be getting with Diane probably next week, and we'll start looking for furniture and options for in there, so... The prison.
Why not?
Well, I don't know how long it would take them to build, the whole building's worth of office furniture.
And there's still a ton of stuff in that trailer that those guys would've got.
Well, they saved some desks for me, I'm not afraid of using them.
Yeah, there's definitely some desks that people will be able to use. We walked in, made sure to keep them open, you know, people will use them.
Yeah. And so... Again, just surprised I haven't started yet.
Me too. But I will keep you guys updated how the...
Lip service.
Next meeting goes.
Colton's gonna get us the maps?
Yeah, we're trying to find that out right now. Colton will get that to you. I'll have it up till you guys are sure.
All right.
Thanks, James.
Well, where is Madison?
Wisconsin.
This paramedic program that Allen's working with is with the Madison Fire Department. Where's Madison at?
Oh, yeah, you know what? It was in an email.
It's in Idaho.
It's in Idaho?
I got in contact with ICRIM about that, that, he said, yeah, he says Madison is one of their clients. And he did say that they have an umbrella policy...
Are you listening?
Madison has an umbrella policy outside of ICRIM, and he's familiar with it, so, he said, everything... ICRIM said they didn't see any problems with it. And I didn't see any problems either.
It's good to have that working relationship with these, where we can train and grow and move, and, you know, and it keeps the workforce going.
Yeah.
I think it's great stuff, I just didn't know where that's... I regret.
Yeah. Hunter, stand up. This is Hunter, what's your last name?
Harrington. Harrington, he is an intern with the prosecutor's office. And he's interested in civil work, so, might be hanging around...
Specialize in dump trash? Oh. Need somebody to follow through.
Oh, dump trash.
Speaking of which, have you...
What?
Have you followed through?
Followed through?
The litter.
Little pile out in the gravel pit, remember?
Yeah.
You followed through?
Your turn.
You gonna get that boy a ticket?
Oh, that?
Yeah. Get your deputies tuned up, like, that's the follow through.
That was before I went in, so I've got to... I gotta get caught back up.
Oh, that reminds me, after the last, the last meeting, Mr. O'was talking about code enforcement and prosecutions, I did talk to Shanti. Right now, the new attorney is supposed to be coming on on the sixteenth, and Shanti says, yeah, that's something I can have heard work on.
That would be nice. I, you know, I feel bad for those court enforcement people when they go out and they do all these things and they're, they just stop.
Yeah, there's a couple areas that are bad.
Yeah.
I remember doing something.
Aw, flew ya.
Well, I know what that part is.
Well, if you know what that part is, then you should be able to follow through.
Yeah.
I don't think you wanna do that, whatever.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good, good.
It's nice to see everybody.
You got an awful lot of paperwork here.
I do, but I promise it's just example paperwork, and, and you don't have to, it's not for reading through the whole thing, it's just example.
So when did you try and do this before?
I went over and spoke with Shelley. Well, firstly, I emailed back in early November and said, I'd like to be on the schedule to speak to the commissioners, I have an idea. And I, in my mind, you guys are idea guys. And you're surrounded with people who, when you say a thing is a good idea, then you press forward to those people to implement, right? Or tell you if implementation is possible. So in my brain, if you had, if I have an idea, I come to you and I say, hey, I think this might work. And you go, let me see if it'll work, I'll talk to them. And then the emails that I got back and forth were, yes, we'll put you on the schedule and you can present on this day, and then ultimately, the email was...
We're gonna page you.
Taking you off the schedule until you provide us with the material to talk about what you're going to present. And then I, Shelley was kind enough to sit with me in her office and explain her thinking behind that decision, which was to say that, in her experience of working with you guys, you know, even if an idea is presented to you, one of the questions that you'll ask is, have you discussed it with the people who would have to implement it? Which, of course, I never come and speak to you without speaking to my supervisor and my head of department, ever.
The meeting is not the same without a personnel executive.
I know.
And hopefully, we're gonna do Dylan and open.
He didn't, he didn't mention executive, so, I don't know, but I, we're discussing, it's up to that.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion to go into executive session, pursuant to Idaho Code 742061.
I want this to be an open session, not executive.
And I agree, that's entirely appropriate for the subject matter.
All right, well, yeah, I mean, we're here to talk about the, sort of, the city council meeting that Terry, Carrie, and I went to, and then the subsequent communications that we got through the public records request. And Carrie, and Terry, and I, and Natalie have been working on that all week, but why don't we just start by opening it up to you guys? What do you, what do you want to talk about with us here today?
Well, I'll, and I'll, I'll start out that, you know, I, after our last commissioner's meeting, I reached out to Carrie, and Dylan, and Terry, and told them I would like them to review the public records and, and help us move forward in how we could address this. And so, they said, well, let us work on that, and we'll start coming up with a plan, because I, I feel it's important that we follow up with some of the comments, and just make sure that the data that was, that was provided is accurate. So, and I think with that being said, Dylan, then you guys can take it from there.
Yeah, well, let me summarize what we've done this week, and you guys can tell me, you know, if that directionally sounds accurate to you or not, and if not, then we can talk about how else to go about it. But, you know, and again, this is sort of an iterative process this week of me, Carrie, Terry...
Well, how did you take it personally?
It didn't bother me, I mean, you know, I don't like to see people referring to you as being sort of dishonest or evasive or whatever, but, you know...
Attorneys get used to that.
Yeah, we... Last time I checked, people didn't like people in my profession very much, although it was more Terry than Carrie and me that took the brunt of it, and I can tell you Terry's reaction is the same. He was very like, yeah, okay, you know, whatever.
And this is from the communication from Marty Anderson to the city council. Yeah, we walked away with that, with a very positive feeling from that council.
Everybody did, that was there.
Yeah, and so...
It was after.
We thought it was great, so it did catch us all three by surprise, but, you know, we're consultants, and you hired us to do these hard things, and we've all presented cases or projects and had controversial meetings, and things come up, and I think ultimately, what, it's just a misunderstanding of...
Well, how did they get to, because I don't know what you guys presented to them. I don't know the discussion, I don't know any of that, right? And I'm not gonna go watch the city council meeting, right? But how did one councilman, in an email, say that the county is trying to make them pay for it all? How did they get there? And, and I, and I, and I'm gonna follow up with, with that, how did, how did we get to the point where we're asking the airbase to use their pipeline? Is that something you guys asked them?
No.
Where did all that come from?
I, I mean, there's clearly some misunderstandings, and, and so, part of the, the exercise or the response approach that we've come up with is to, you know, is to send a letter back to city representatives saying, hey, we reviewed the public records, response, clearly there's some, still some misunderstandings, and we didn't adequately convey the information we were trying to, so we are going to prepare more comprehensive written responses that we can then walk through together.
Well, did, you know, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Dylan, I apologize. Did, did you guys ask them to pay for something?
No.
No, we explicitly said that.
Because I mean, that's why I mean, that come up over and over and over, that you guys went over there with the intent on getting the city to start funding something.
No.
But that's what, that's what, that's what the public records show, that, that we are asking, or that's what they're saying, for the city to pay the cost, and...
Yeah, and it wouldn't in the, in the recording, if you watch it, there's no...
No, I'm not watching it.
Yeah, we explicitly say, you know, we're not here to ask for any money, there is no project, this is all conceptual, we just, is the city interested, we need to be able to say, how is the city interested?
I think a whole part of it, for me, is, and we talked about this extensively, when Scott Campbell filed that water permit, and the municipal piece, that's for in hopes that one day, the city and the county can work together, and we could do something with water for them, that's the only reason, that's there.
Not to have them pay.
And, well, not only to not have to pay, but it was, it was said that what we're doing is illegal, we're filing a water right for them.
Right.
And, and we...
I don't know where they got that either.
Are not filing a water right for the city whatsoever.
We did present the letter, the 2018 letter of support for that application, signed by the mayor on behalf of the city at the meeting.
He won't remember that.
Well, we brought it up at the meeting and showed it on the screen.
It was actually pasted in the...
We showed it on the screen to remind them, like, you actually supported this application back in 2018. I mean, granted, it's been a while, but here we are. It was, it was nice, you know, they did support... It was, it was nice, you know, they, they did support it.
There was one councilman that said in the email, because I don't see any of the other councilmen saying anything, just one.
Negative.
Well, it's all negative from him, but, uh, he said that our recharge efforts only benefited the farmers. And he doesn't know how wrong he is. Dead wrong. Well, that's no different than, I mean, but, you know, it's those little snippets.
Right.
When you, when you address, let's address them all.
We will, that, no, but we very much just started that process.
I mean, partly, address them all because...
Point question.
Yes.
I don't even know, we're bringing water from, from Love Ridge Bridge and the costs that, that, that they came up with. I'm like, "Are you serious? Who, who done the work on these costs? Let alone the fact saying, "Well, the water's only a couple feet deep and it's gonna fill everything with mud and, and, I mean..." Whatever. And then the other part is, is I don't know how to shut it down with that leadership and his little buddy over there of sending their guy to Water Resources to muddy up all the work we've done.
Right.
And to meet with Cynthia Bridge-Clark and that water rights specialist, and I feel it's important that we, the county, you folks, get ahold of them, say, "We want to make sure you guys understand what was said, what did happen, what the requests are." You know, you just used the word municipal, you just used the word municipal. The county has a ton of subdivisions outside the city limits that run water, a ton of them.
Right.
It doesn't have to be just the city of Mountain Home.
Right.
But the tragedy here is, is that we're trying to do something positive for the community, for the citizens in the city of Mountain Home, and to have that thrown back like that, that's just, that's terrible.
And in fact, if you just elaborate...
We haven't picked the city, it's Elmore County.
Right.
I mean, there's no one body in it.
And so just to elaborate a little bit on sort of the, the follow-up plan, is that, yes, we very much, the, the plan is we send a short letter quickly back to the city that says, "Clearly, there are some misunderstandings, we are working on more detailed written responses." And then Natalie helped me draft a short letter to send to Cynthia and Cody at IDWR to forward that letter and say, "Hey, look, we realize that there were these communications, we're working on this, we're handling it for now, don't, you know, don't worry about it, we, there's clearly some, some education that needs to happen," and we're doing that.
I don't know, I think it's out of control.
And the other thing, in terms of the municipal thing, is that, if that's the, you know, we'll make the point, like, here, we're, we're trying, the county's trying to work with the city, you know, we hope that after we get you these more detailed responses and get back before you, you know, again, we'd like to ask to, for the city to help work on the response. IDWR with us, but if you don't want to, then the county will either just drop the municipal use altogether or we'll see if we can change it to dealing with subdivisions outside the city limits.
I don't think you need to drop the municipal use off there, because none of us are gonna be in office forever. Someday, there's gonna be a group that's gonna work. Well, but I think you need to ask the city council. I, I think the city council makes, has the authority to make decisions on whether or not they're a part of the water part for the future.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I think that's, that's important.
Well, I mean, municipal now isn't the same thing, I mean, there's, Elmore County's growing, so we can't take that, I don't think that we can take that out and leave that, that part out when it's not just the city of Mountain Home, even if it, it doesn't become an agreement, which we hope there is and we work together, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's larger than that.
Yeah, and when you're talking water, in water rights parlance, the word municipal doesn't necessarily have to be tied to a municipality. Like, if you're a subdivision in a rural area, but you have a centralized water system, the modern practice is to call that municipal, even though you're not in a municipality, so, uh, yeah, subdivision's an unincorporated Elmore County municipal.
When you, when you read that one councilman's emails, he, you know, that, "Our recharge water is only for farmers, nobody else, nobody benefits from that, just the farmers," right? And, and I don't want anybody asking for any money.
Right, that, that was not something we lodged.
We have never asked for a dime.
And in fact, when we were putting the presentation together, there was a slide in the initial draft at the end, it was like, "What are we ultimately asking for?" And I told Terry, "Hey, move that up to the first or second slide, because I don't want the city council thinking the whole time, like, oh, what is, what are they gonna ask us for, are they asking us for money?" I wanted it to make it abundantly clear that, like, all that we're asking for is just a little bit of information about how they might be able to use municipal water.
You couldn't have that any clearer.
Thank you.
Well, and I...
Unfortunately, I don't know how they got cleaned off the way they did.
Yeah, I mean, the stuff is complicated, and you know, we were, I don't know how long we were there talking about it, maybe...
It was quite a while.
Forty-five minutes, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this stuff.
It was very clear that, um, there needed to be more education on a lot of the different pieces, on, you know, like, basic of how much water's needed for that.
But it wasn't, it wasn't like the entire council dove in on this and attacked it. It was just, what I saw was one councilman, a mayor and other people I don't even know.
And I think that sitting up here, just like they sit on their floor, just, a lot of times, you always think, "Oh, they're asking for something." But if you had it in the slide, I mean, it was obvious right that we weren't. Because I know it's, you know, everything, I hate to say it, is money-driven, so, I mean, a lot of things, we have to make things work for the county as a whole, but, but if it's in the slide, I don't understand why there was this understanding.
Well, and I, I don't know how they, I wasn't there, I don't hear what you told them, and I'm not gonna watch it, but somehow or another, it got sidetracked to another level. And all that did was drive a wedge deeper between that city and Mountain Home, or Elmore County. And that's sad, because our whole intent, our whole goal, was to go and help and be a part of everything that transpires with water for the future here. And to have that go that sideways by somebody's opinion...
I'm glad to hear you guys don't want to give up on that municipal piece and just, because the water right doesn't depend on it, and you could say, "Okay, forget that, we're just moving on."
None of us are gonna be in these offices forever.
Yeah.
And hopefully, there's people over there and there's people here that can all get along and make it all happen.
We've talked about it before, how even with the Boise River Project, it, you're making generational decisions, and it's bigger, so I appreciate you guys recommending we're not gonna be in office and this is bigger.
I mean, all of this is a one-time shot.
And this 20 CFS withdrawal was the beginning, you know, this is the test. If this goes through, it blows open the doors to what we can do for recharge much faster.
Oh, yeah.
We'll still work on the little campus, but much faster.
And, yeah, if you're a little vague on funding, I think I'm the guy that's putting the halt on all that, because I keep saying, "We're not doing that till we have the water."
We have to have the water first, right? We have to have the water rights first, and that's, it's more complicated, this project can happen faster. They still need to keep going at both, but this can hap, this is, this, by this letter coming back with these questions, it catapulted this project to the forefront, and we've talked about, this, this is an opportunity to start the relationship, but then more water can come after this, there's still more water to be applied for, and 70 CFS might come after this. And, and what does that look like? Because you have the water rights and you have the water right now, let's go, it's a pump station and pipeline, right? So we're, we have a lot of work to do, but there is, we made it clear, there is no project yet.
Well, we've already accomplished what a lot of people said we couldn't. Oh, you have to get a water right out of that dam.
Yeah, that's the piece.
Better believe it. And we had to fight everybody on the other side of the border to get it, but it worked. And on top of the water right on the dam, we also have the water right for the floodwater that comes off of, off of the foothills. We also got that done, and I mean, and you look at the amount of water we put in the ground last year, just on recharge alone. That's what this whole community is surviving. Every minute was protested. What's that? Every minute was protested. Both of the water rights. Yeah. And then, you know, the other thing that I think is important, Dylan, too, is when Marty Anderson asks why the county, who protested the air base's water right, he doesn't understand the dynamics of what, the, the, the sequence of events, what was trying to be done, I mean, it was just, it's all just directed at, "We're trying to do someone harm" or, or not being truthful, uh...
The response was very clear from Water Resources.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And if any, obviously, he didn't read it, if he took that out of it. Uh, or his head's not where it belongs.
Do you think he could read it?
I don't know, but the protest, I think that term seems so negative, but it was just making sure that the utilization of water in our county was appropriately driven.
It's a formality.
Oh, yeah, there's a phrase, an unofficial phrase, friendly protest with water rights, and that's exactly what it is. It's, I mean, Idaho Power, I mean, they protest so many applications, and the whole point is just because they want a particular remark or a condition, Claudia, and it's not that they're opposing the project overall, it's just, you know, there's some language we want in the approval.
We did address that with, when we met with the base, we brought that up specifically to ensure they understood that it's a friendly protest and procedural.
Sure, well, and I think that the other thing, and I, I don't know how your, your group feels about this, but I think it's important that the irrigation district, that Idaho Department of Water Resources and the air base are all aware of what, what the circumstances are here.
Yeah.
They have to, they have to have a clear understanding of what we're trying to do, and, and it has to be out in the public, in a public forum, and so that there's no misunderstandings.
We have, we've taken the letter and bracketed out each specific comment topic and responded per that and have, um, really, it's six pages long so far, have three, or all the, all of it done, and Terry's looked at it, Dylan will look at it, and then we'll email to you guys early next week to really dive in, um, for the responses. And, and while that's being finalized, in the meantime, like Dylan said, he has some drafts of letters that you guys can review to be ready to go.
Yeah, so, like, I have a, a printout here of sort of the, the letters that I've described, like the quick one back to the city and then the one to Cynthia and Cody at IDWR. Like, I have templates of those that we can all review together if you'd like, or if what I described sounds directionally accurate, then I'm happy to just take the ball and run with it.
You're right, you got it.
Okay.
I think it's really sad, we asked you guys and you agreed to go over and do what you did, and we paid you to go do that, and now we gotta pay you to clean up.
If I may, in our defense, I don't think it was our fault, but...
No, it's not your fault, I'm just saying, how sad is that?
We recognize that, especially after seeing...
When you're talking about taxpayer dollars, how sad is that?
Yeah.
It all does come back to that education piece that we've talked about a million times and educating the public. I know, and this is just, it's building, the way our responses, our structure, is building on, this isn't just a, a letter that the response of the council is gonna read, you know, obviously, we want to send it to the irrigation district, IDWR, but this is hopefully gonna be read by plenty of people.
When you get that done, can we have a copy of your responses?
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And we can, we can give it to our Facebook manager over here.
One thing, as you guys might not be aware of, I noticed in, in the public records, there was some reference that, well, they were giving, they gave the irrigation district some money and the county has it. Well, I don't think you were here, the district appeared before these, and these guys said, "Yeah, we were going to look at our budget seriously next year and we hope to provide you some money," so...
No, we told them we'd match what the city gave.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, well, irrigation district's separate from the county, and we're working together.
Well, but we don't need the money to wash.
Yeah, yeah, why it was brought up, I don't know, but...
Yeah, I mean, and back to your, uh, earlier question, Commissioner Hope, I mean, it's like, yeah, I don't think any of us were bothered by sort of the, you know, sort of references to be evasive or whatever, but, I mean, it's just, I wish that they had told us that at the, you know, at the meeting, so we could have sort of corrected some of that real time. I know the three of us very much left thinking, "Oh, that went really well, they seemed so appreciative and all that," and then to see later, like, you know, that's not at all how we felt at that, so, why didn't you tell us that at the time?
A lot of keyboard warriors out there.
Yeah.
This is the only issue, yeah.
Again, it's sad.
Yeah.
It's sad that we're, we're spending resources on a cleanup that really doesn't need to happen.
We'll present again if we, right, we'll do.
And I mean, I think, you know, the whole, I mean, the whole thing is, it's like, you know, and you can tell us if you disagree with this, but I think collectively, we think the water situation is too important to let little, you know, sort of, kind of, personal, interpersonal conflicts get in the way.
It is, but unfortunately, Dylan, when somebody puts it in writing and says that the water's two foot deep, they're filing this illegally, you guys are being unfaithful, you're not being truthful, and, and you put all of that in writing and send that out, some, you know, what are you supposed to do? You, you, you've gotta say, "Well, wait a minute, you see what I'm saying?"
It's an opportunity, really, to just, for more education, for more, a public reason, or a reason to do public education. So it just, yeah, it escalates.
But to send the guy to Water Resources...
Well, it escalates urinary olympics. I mean, it's, it's beyond that now, I mean, they put it in writing, unfortunately.
Right, I, I like that phrase, I hadn't heard that before, I don't know if it's common, but...
It's politically correct. Well, he has, you know, they have letters behind it, it's written that they're ethically bound to speak the truth and give truthful facts, so, you know, I don't have any of the special letters, I guess I can say that. You know, Terry did the talking.
Funny thing, I can too.
Terry did the talking, as, you know, professional engineer, professional geologist, lots of letters, so, um, we're confident in what we presented and what we said, and then in our responses, we have all the backups, and, um, it's timely that we had the economist put together his, he has a big report, and we said, last year, we said, "Oh, we kinda need a shorter, more digestible report." He just sent us that draft on the 26th of December, so we have this 10-page report that we're reviewing. We cited that in some of our draft responses, um, which I'm, as soon as Terry's able to look at that and give his update, then I'll send it to you guys for review, but he did fill me in on some, so the next invoice will come back and be large.
It was for planting that seed, Terry.
I'll just, I'll just preface the next invoice to be large.
Remember I said some about money, all things about money?
Yeah, eventually.
Just kidding.
But it's gonna be, it's great, it was the perfect tool, because it's the why the water's so important economically and who benefits.
How does, anybody that knows anything about water, when you're well-blowing air, "I got water rights." Tell me how that's gonna help.
It calls out, the report calls out, you know, these projects may cost tens of millions of dollars, but the impact to not do, to not have water is billions of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
So it, and it, and there's a number of paths.
But the guys that are making those comments have never had their personal well blow air. They don't know what it's like to not be able to turn the faucet on and have water.
My hometown in New Mexico ran out of water in the water.
But the, but the thought behind it was, we got a lot of water rights, so we're safe.
Yeah, we don't want to come to that, right? We're on that trail, yeah. If we had the data, if we had that water study to, the USGS and IDWR study to say, "You have X amount of years left of water, that's what's happening in New Mexico," you know, that's what's happened, where they, then people go, "Oh, my gosh."
And the beds have to come in and manage water.
The last thing I think...
We don't want that in our state.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it's a quite an undertaking, we appreciate your time and patience, and most importantly, we would have never asked you folks to go over there had we have known this was going to be the outcome. It'd be like, you know, I, I will tell you from speaking for the three of us, we felt terrible that you guys had to, had to...
Don't sweat it.
Spoke about that way.
I'd do it again. That's why you're on our side.
Please don't lose any sleep over that.
Yeah, no.
And I know Terry feels the same way.
It's disheartening, it's disheartening to, we think it's a good, a good thing in education, and then it comes back and blows up in our face, and it was frustrating, at least.
It's just not healthy.
Yeah, I've had to drink more, sleepless. It's a huge opportunity that we just can't drop for the citizens, so we'll keep pushing.
Oh, it needs to be addressed, I, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, we were surprised, but, like I said, we'll just turn it into this public education opportunity and get more visibility, if anything, we know that there's a need for more public education from the Facebook.
Yeah, maybe Natalie can work on it, um, or if the education piece, if I have to, I'll let that later.
Really, I mean, she deserves a lot of kudos, because I know she's super busy, and, you know, we had our call with Commissioner Corpus early in the week, and she, I, I think she dropped a fair amount of stuff to help us out with this, so we could get it for you today, so... But please thank her the next time you guys deal with it directly.
And, and does she, will she send us a bill for that, for her work? Make, make sure she does.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, did you guys formally identify yourselves for the record when you came here?
Oh.
No.
Sorry, I'm not good with the procedural stuff. I'm Dylan Lawrence, uh, with Baron Thomas, I'm your water rights attorney.
I'll get past the carry.
Carrie Hill with Panorama Environmental, um, I don't know what my role is for you guys anymore, it's quite consultant.
Once you get on board, we just...
Right now, it's public relations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we owe you an apology, since you're over there, but I know it's not...
No, I'm the same way, no, one of us said the same way.
It's not personal, this is business, this is, you know?
Yeah.
Somebody should show an apology.
Big boys and girls.
It's fine.
Small give it to you.
Try it. Yeah. Maybe not always successful, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, we do appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, we, we like, we appreciate working with you guys, I hope it continues long time.
Well, we got a long ways to go yet.
Yep, we do.
All good.
All right.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure we have other stuff to talk about, but this has been the immediate focus the past few days, so I'm drawing a blank on whatever else you might talk about.
Well, I did, I did wanna say that, that, um, that water right that we, I thought that was well written, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah. Since that was in our county.
See what happened?
All right, well, yeah, we'll be back in touch with those more detailed responses that Carrie was describing, and we can go through those together.
I think we'd like to kinda move on it faster than not.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so I think we'll go ahead and just get on the agenda next week.
Well, I don't know when they have their schedule with Water Resources.
Well, the other thing, too, is if you have any trouble meeting or need to meet with the city council, and there's any scheduling problems or issues, this commissioner's meeting is always available, and I know that, um, we can probably have the majority of those folks show up here if you need to.
Yeah, that's our shortstop. Did anybody in the audience want to come?
Rod Dudley.
Yes, definitely.
Rod Dudley, um, I was at this meeting, and you're correct, the conversation went quite well. In fact, when we left, or I did, it, um, felt like we were headed in the right direction. It was somewhere after that, and even the mayor seemed to be very supportive of it, and they did ask several times, um, not just the mayor, but council asked several times if, uh, there was gonna be a fee for anything. And being a layman, it was easy for me to conceive that it was coming to the border of the city, that's all that, and that what I took from it, too, is with the city's support, um, you would be able to apply for grants and, and/or funding that, um, if the city's behind it, it makes it easier to do what you have to do. So, um, what happened afterwards is somewhat of a mystery, in other words, I can't say, because I don't know for sure, I mean, I have letters and emails, too, but, um, it blew up after that, and it's interesting how the conversation changed with the mayor. And I don't think it was so much the council, it was some, but some other influence. Another thing that I feel where there's a lack of communication, or, is, um, planning and zoning's meeting notes are superb. You can go in
Which one is zoning? Um, county or city?
City. Um, I haven't read planning and zoning, uh, county, but planning and zonings, you wouldn't even have to go to the meeting, and you'd get the details, I mean, they're pages long. You read any of the meeting notes, um, from county, or city, and they're just one or two lines. Rod Dudley said XYZ, but didn't get the essence of it, um, and that's with every topic. Um, that's why I made last week, um, a big deal on, uh, Facebook and, and my website, because, um, Nicole Coffey, um, I wanted her to get acknowledged for what she does. The city has the same resources to do the same work, as far as they have the recording, they're there, um, to, uh, do, um, do a good job, but they certainly can do a better job. And so the public, when they go in to read the notes, uh, which, they're not publicly, um, available for several, uh, we, there's some that they're not out since November, but in the packets, the meeting notes are in there. People don't know that they can get all that stuff in a packet, um, from just the last meeting, so, um, it's an educational thing. But citizens are missing out on the, um, on the transparency and the understanding of what is transpiring. That's why I feel what we do is important. We don't, we're not, I mean, this is the most opinion I've ever been able to express, um, and I appreciate the opportunity, um, but that's what we're about, you know, yeah, we have to use Facebook, but that's how people communicate. You have to weed through all the garbage to get the good out of it, um, so.
We're pretty transparent, we don't
Oh God, I so appreciate you guys. And I think it could be better at City Hall, but they're too busy protecting each other. Not everybody, but
Not my problem.
Well, I could give an opinion on that.
Yeah, we all have it.
Not my problem.
Anybody else in the audience? Wanna come up? All right, once again, we appreciate you guys, I'm sorry.
So when you're trying to do something good, which we're, what we're doing, with water, everyone, right? Gets spun around, we're lighter, we're lighter, and that is sad, that's terrible.
I do have another comment, and it is recorded, uh, Tues, no, it was yesterday's meeting. It was, um, about impact basin. And the mayor sat there, kinda wanted, it has to be said, the, he sat there and said, there is no problem with water. I just wanna dispel that rumor, so citizens don't panic. It's, his words, not mine. There is a problem with waters, or a sewer, and the processing thereof. Um, again, that's not county's issue, but, but at the same time, it needs to be addressed. So if you have water coming up in the end of the sewer, then it's not balancing out what, I mean, there's a problem.
Well, and I think
Well, the levels in the ground are dropping.
Oh yeah, I talked
If you don't believe that, go watch Hills, they're running around dropping wells everywhere.
I agree, and I have several people that have told me they've had to go, you know, several hundred feet deeper to get water. So to hear that it's plentiful.
Well, and that's what I said earlier, obviously, these guys have never had a well blow air. And it's a big deal, because it's, when, the minute that happens, it's not cheap. It becomes very expensive, if you wanna be able to turn your tap on again.
Yeah.
We do focus on quite a bit of energy on, in the draft responses, on that comment of, we could, we could do triple the growth. And the education piece, and we keep it from Tuesday, things like that, where you can't, it's not just based on how much water the city uses on average, and they could just support this growth, you have a maximum day demand calculation that the city has to abide by, and the water rights are required to suffice that maximum day demand, which has, it gets complicated, but there's like a multiplier on it, essentially, that what's the maximum day demand that you would need to support if everybody, you know, flipped their water on the same time type thing, and the, I'm layman, it's very layman to say like that, but, I mean, it's essentially what it is. So then, you base your EDU is on a maximum day demand, and, um, Terry provided a very detailed, talk, response of this is actually what it would be, and it was like, if water rights from sixties or something, you could support growth through twenty twenty, or seventies, you could support growth through twenty twenty or sixties, that's what it was, if he, if they did a water call in the sixties
You can have all the water rights you want, but if you can't get the water
If the water call tomorrow is like in the nineteen sixties range, the city can support growth through twenty twenty five.
When the water call comes.
In the seventies, maybe through twenty forty. And so that's, that's how we've responded to that, and talking about what an EDU is, what equivalent dwelling unit, and maximum day demand, and defining it, and really giving it that education piece, so, that kind of misconception, the assumptions that the state is requiring out water users for the dam raise to recoup the funds, um, and use ARPA funds for that, and there's no requirement to repay, and the state hasn't said anything about that, nor made a cost, who's, obviously, it's the best kept secret, right? Who's gonna get the water, and how much is it gonna cost?
We're all waiting.
We're all waiting, the state is waiting, Ada County is waiting, so, um, things like that, we just clarify.
All they gotta do is go get the dam from Randy in Irrigation District, he better turn that around.
Stop, stop.
Why, they are, they just did it again.
I know.
When you talk about sewer, have a conversation with Scott. They don't, their lagoons are not full, they're full of sludge. If you take the sludge out of them, you're gaining a lot of capacity, for a lot less money.
What was the cost of, of the
Ten billion's what I saw.
Of the study to, from the sewage out to the
Oh, seven hundred. Close to seven hundred thousand. You could have probably got those lagoon stretch.
I'm gonna take Al Bowling after this meeting, so we can just let Stan's lead.
He'll catch me.
We might have to put the gutter guards on. I agree with you, I agree with you.
Surplus is what I built, I know a little bit about it.
A little bit. Maybe they can consult, maybe they can have, their consultant is worthless, they can have a better consultant.
And please make sure that Terry knows our feelings as well. We definitely feel terrible about this.
We're glad you guys aren't sensitive.
Yeah, no, he's, he's probably the least affected of the three of us, and he was the one that took the brunt of it, so.
That, you know, do we want, when we respond to this, do we want to include, um, Keller Engineering, their representative on it?
Nope.
So they're aware of all of it? Because we do reference, we suggest you consult with a qualified water rights consultant.
They've got it, that's on them, yeah. I, I just wanna address what he said, and how it was misconstrued, or turned, or twisted, or whatever.
They consulted with the non-experts, whatever.
To that, we gotta send the chief over there.
Just for this year.
She'll take care of it.
Not a very kind of
Okay, moving right along.
All right.
Pull up your Cybertruck, break out your phone, cue, go to media.
Cybertruck.
Thank you, Dylan.
Yeah.
No Cybertruck.
Thanks for coming over, guys, thank you.
Sounds like we'll see you next week.
I guess, do you wanna
Probably.
Do you have a scheduling now?
Unless there's any more downfall, and who knows?
I'd like to say what can happen in a week, you know.
Don't say that, not coming with you somewhere, Carrie, what are you doing?
What time is it? About ten thirty? I'm, I'm probably pretty open, I'm usually
When we get all those
I mean, I'm flexible as well, there's a Water Resource Board meeting, but I can, I can watch that online in the afternoon, so, yeah.
Everyone, ten thirty, does that work?
Works for me, yeah.
Thanks again, I'm sorry again, I know I keep saying this.
All right, well, thank you, guys, have a good weekend.
You too, bye.
Yeah, have a good weekend.
Can we get a record? I talked to the sheriff, he said you guys can just go to lunch, and then go right up to the jail inspection after that, they'll be ready.
I should, I guess adjourn, kind of, we're gonna do our jail inspection.
And then adjourn from there.
Adjourn from there, all right, that's a motion.
Should I take a powder and milk?
Check for that. All in favor?
Bye.